...meeting Monday, May tenth, twenty twenty-one, six o'clock PM, at the administration center.
No, I was waiting to get on line for some work.
Let's recall this meeting to order control call, please, Mrs. Zimmer. Ms. Anderson.
President.
Mr. Air.
Here.
Mrs. Brockman.
Here.
Ms. Dixon.
Here.
Ms. Haskins. Here. Ms. Crumpel.
Here.
Dr. Wadler.
Dr. Wadler, do you hear?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the presentation. That is the United States of America, the interior republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Other questions regarding this evening's agenda?
I need the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Mr. Air, through previous agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you opposed? It looks like I need an approved motion for a closed session.
I need the board to approve closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of individuals whose performance is being considered to be needless in a reverbal injury to those individuals' reputation, as those individuals have requested a closed session. Second.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Ms. Brackman, to set the board approve that the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competencies of individuals whose performance is being considered to be needless in a reverbal injury to those individuals' reputation, as those individuals have requested a closed session. We'll follow, please. Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Air.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Haskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Crumpel.
Yes.
Dr. Wadler.
Yes.
The division statement, "The Division of Pleasant Valley Community School District provides the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in everything, not for some students, but for every student." Communications concerns and constructive ideas for the district. If you're here for a non-agenda item, you will be allowed to speak after we get through our National History Day recognition, so we'll kind of go back to that one. We'll go on to our board. Dr. Wadley.
Dr. Wadley, any recognitions you'd like to add?
No, not today, thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
I have nothing.
Mr. Air.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mrs. Crumpel.
Nothing today, thank you.
Mrs. Brockman.
I have nothing.
I have nothing, thank you.
Personal personnel, do I know, you have a card? Mr. Quinones.
I have nothing.
Dr. Wadler.
I'm going to circle back after Mr. Struse, who's recognized.
Mrs. Zimmer.
Well, of course. So, always enjoy this time. This last weekend was very busy for high school students with prom, and then was also a large group stage speech competition. And in vocal music, our trouble chamber choir, chamber and brass choir received a Division One Superior ratings, with both the trouble chamber and chamber receiving a near-perfect forty score from all three judges. They were thirty-nine, forty, and forty. The trouble choir and concert choir received Division Two excellent ratings. In band, the ninth grade band, concert band, wind ensemble, and wind symphony received Division One Superior ratings, and the PV symphonic band received a Division Two excellent rating. And finally, the orchestra received a Division One Superior rating. This next recognition falls a little bit out of the purview of the district, but I'm going to make the connection. Youth musicians must be a member of their high school orchestra to audition for the Quad City Youth Symphony, and we're proud to announce that Pleasant Valley High School senior Erica Holmberg was selected as this year's concerto competition winner and performed her trumpet solo this past weekend. It was pretty cool. Also, this one is one of those events that we sponsor, and we just see where things land, but the Mathematical Association of America annually sponsors five grade-level American mathematics competitions, or called AMC. They provide exams for eighth grade, ten A, ten B, twelve A, and twelve B. Those are the five levels. Within these competition levels, awards and certificates are provided for young women in mathematics across all fifty states or regions. The James Street Award, which is a quantitative trading firm, they fund five awards and one-hundred-and-fifty certificates supporting the AMC twelve A exam results. Five certificate of excellent awards were given in the state of Iowa, with Pleasant Valley High School earning two of these. Congratulations to Pleasant Valley High School senior Emerson Peters and Kavya Kalter. The Akami, which is a global content delivery network, cybersecurity, and cloud service company, also supports five awards and one-hundred-and-fifty certificates for the AMC twelve B competition. Iowa students were awarded six AMC twelve B certificate of excellence, with winners from Pleasant Valley High School earning two of those. Congratulations to Pleasant Valley High School seniors Kavya Kalter and Claire Potts. And then lastly, we received word last week that U.S. News and World Report announced that based upon AP exam data for twelfth grade students during the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year, which comprises thirty percent of the score, math and reading proficiencies for grades nine through eleven, twenty percent of the score, math and reading performance grades nine through eleven, twenty percent, our graduation rate, ten percent, underserved student performance, ten percent, and college curriculum breadth, which was defined as twelfth graders who earned an AP qualifying score as ten percent, meaning they got a three, four, or five. Pleasant Valley High School was ranked number one in the metro area, number two in the state of Iowa, and number six hundred and forty-six out of seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven, or in the top four percent nationally. So again, congratulations to Mr. Erickson and the high school staff.
Thank you. Mr. Struse.
Yes, I guess I'll circle back for one second. I just want to say thank you to our high school, the administrative staff, and everybody involved with setting up, getting prom taken care of on Saturday night, the parade event. Also, our RAP or Right After Prom Committee for all the work that went into that, with the weather and the adjustments that had to be taken care of, but just a great night and event for our kids that were so proud that they had the opportunity as their juniors and seniors and the flexibility that they were able to show to make all that work. So again, just thank you to our PTAs and everybody involved with that. Huge thank you. The other thing I want to do tonight is just take a moment to reflect and say thank you to all of you as board members. The month of May is National Board Recognition Month. You know, you look back, this year's theme is leading through uncharted waters. I'm not sure that could not be any more exact over the last fourteen months of what you have had to encounter. What makes me so proud is the way you've come together to help make sure that our kids during this time had a quality learning environment, but yet in a safe and secure learning environment. Our number one mission is providing great education for our kids. In the last fourteen months, you had to face a lot of tough decisions, and I would never want to be in your shoes in that regard, evident by what transpired walking in this evening. Those are tough things, and I look back, and I'll stand firm with all of you in that every decision that we have made has been the right one for kids and making sure that they have a good education for what we do, and we will keep working that way. So, please understand, as we look at this, I thank you for your commitment to the board and the time you put in in a voluntary position to come here on the Mondays to plan ahead of time to be a part of this. I cannot thank you anymore, and on behalf of the entire district, our students, our staff, our parents, and everybody in our community, thank you for the countless hours you put in and the gratitude you show and the tough decisions that you make. I'd ask everyone here to stand today and recognize all of you for your great work. So with that, as we do in the world of education, thanking our board members in the volunteer position, here's your certificate.
Thank you.
I'm deep red, dude. Friends, thank you. Thank you.
I'm hoping for a picture, too.
Jody Oskens, thank you so much. Jean Dixon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Brockman.
Thank you.
Kat Crumpel. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for all you've done through these last fourteen months, the time before that, and just understand we really appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
I just want to add on to Brian's recognition and thanks to Pleasant Valley Junior High for providing us the nice meal before our meeting tonight. Dr. Wadler, are you going to do the recognition?
Yes, thank you. It's my honor tonight to introduce Melissa Miller, who is our ELP teacher at Cody in the Bridge New. ELP stands for Extended Learning Program, and Melissa works with kids and looks for the just right challenges for kids in her program. She's going to introduce to you some students who have been successful in their entries for National History Day, both locally and regionally, and there's always something really wonderful to be proud about, and this is something we're super proud about today. We enter kids in National History Day, but we've never had a year like this one, right, Melissa? I don't know. So, if you would please stand so that we can thank you, and then if you would introduce the students who are here with you and tell us a little bit about their accomplishment, and maybe the students would then introduce their parents if they're here with them tonight.
So, I have a group here of about four wonderful young ladies. One is missing, couldn't make it tonight, but they participated in the National History Day competition. One from the junior high participated on their own time. They kind of emailed me and said, "Ms. Miller, we really want to do it again this year. Would you help us?" And I said, "Sure, why not?" So, they participate in National History Day, and they went and competed at St. Ambrose University virtually with people from school districts like Bettendorf, Davenport, North Scott, so it's Mississippi River District, and they placed high enough in the Mississippi River District to compete at the state level, the state of Iowa level, so they went all the way to state. So, I'm going to start with Madeline O'Malley. Come on up, Ellen. Madeline O'Malley is a sixth grader at Cody Elementary School, and do you want to come and say a little bit about your project and kind of what your process was, what you had to do?
My project was an exhibit board. My project was an exhibit board on Ruth Bitter Ginsburg, and I had to research and create a thesis and create an exhibit board that told all about how she communicated her point across to others throughout her life.
So, she used Supreme Court documents, we're talking primary sources, digging, behind digging of research to put all of this together. So, I don't know if you got a chance to look at the slide, because she even put these colors around. But yeah, so Madeline, sixth grader at Cody.
Madeline, are your parents here this evening?
Uh, yes.
Would you introduce them, please?
In the back, there's Leo O'Malley, my mom, Martin O'Malley, my dad, and my brother, Jack O'Malley.
Madeline, as you look at your project, was there something that you took away from the experience that you're most proud of, or something that you learned that you didn't know going into it?
I didn't realize how recent gender discrimination was and how recent the problems that she had fixed were. They're quite recent topics. I thought they were a little bit further back in history. I didn't realize how recent they were to now.
How about future inspiration? Did she, any inspiration for you looking forward?
Like, would you do this type of project again?
Oh, yeah, I would definitely do this again next year. It was a very good experience. I think I learned about on how to organize my research and how to get research done in advance and organize all my thoughts.
Excellent. Well, congratulations. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
All right, Ellen, I've got my three from the junior high. Whitney Cozer couldn't be here tonight. So, we've got Maya and Ava Vargas, and we got, sorry, Elizabeth Haas, and they decided this year to go out on a limb and do a group performance, which is kind of like a play, but in National History Day, it's just a little bit different, and they did theirs on Broadway and how Broadway communicated messages through their show. So I'll let them tell you a little bit about it. And just especially their set, I think they designed it themselves, and I think that's really cool, too, so definitely can have maps.
So, as Ms. Miller said, our project was on Broadway and how it communicated messages of inclusion and racial and gender equality all throughout since it was originally brought to New York. And it was really cool to learn about how way back then, everything was so different, like most of the stage only included a certain group of people, whereas now all different people are always on the stage, and it's almost always racially integrated, and it's super cool. Ms. Miller said our set, we, blood, sweat, and tears went into that set, I tell you. It was like a little...
Triangle.
It was a triangle, yeah, and we had like a lazy Susan almost under it so we could spin it to make it look like we're in a different place.
What?
It was a lazy, yeah. There was a lot of arguing about that set, but I think Kenny and Robb told us together. Mr. Evans helped us bunch, he was basically building, so.
My parents are here tonight, so my...
Your turn.
So, my mom, Erin Vargas, and my dad, Jose Vargas, are over there. My dad, Alan, right over there.
My parents.
So, do the three of you have aspirations of future musicals and being involved in plays at school?
So, Whitney, Whitney is very much a musical theater person, and she got us both in, all of us into like theater and stuff, and we're in the, the play for the junior high.
Excellent. And that's coming up, is it this weekend?
The weekend after this. Yeah.
Two weekends, okay?
Yeah.
Excellent. So, as you look back, is there something you learned during this project, maybe that you didn't think of when you started, or some that you're very proud of?
Um, I think something that we, something that we all learned was how so many people can be affected by just one show or one play that, that can tell so many different things about the world and how we want it to be or how it should be, and it can affect a lot of different people. I think we were all just really proud of how it turned out in the end.
I think it's amazing, so did you contact Ms. Miller to do it? Because you're in junior high now, right? She was your ELP teacher at Cody, and just how awesome that you guys were so inspired in your dad, Cody, that even now in junior high, you're like, hey, I still want to...
Yeah, they did. They put in countless hours. I mean, luckily, luckily with the hybrid model earlier in the year, they did have probably more, I don't know.
They rolled in the same day.
Yeah, so that worked out really well. There was a lot of ways they could get together and do that, but also I feel the mention, this year's theme for National History Day was communication and the key to understanding. So they have to pick a topic that's further than twenty years of history, that they have to tie to communication and the key to understanding, so that's why the two topics were chosen for us.
Thank you for giving that. With it being virtual, did you have to perform live, or did you do a video, and did you submit that, or how did that work?
Um, we did a video, so we just kind of set up a camera and recorded basically how we would, but a lot more.
So you got to do multiple tapes?
That's one thing I liked about it. We, instead of performing live in front of judges, we got to do it as many times as we wanted, till it was how we wanted it to be.
Yeah, normally performances at National History Day are done live and in front of judges.
Well, as Ms. Miller stated, number one, kudos to the five of you girls for doing this. There's a lot of work that does go into it. As you mentioned, it is great research skills, great skills for your future. We're very proud of you. You represent Pleasant Valley very well, and Ms. Miller, thank you for leading the girls in this opportunity as well. So, should be very, very proud of yourselves and the four maybe the future work from all of you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And now we move on. If there's anyone here that would like to address the board about a non-agenda item?
Is that me? Now, who is the mandor of the board? Are you the mandor?
I am the mandor.
Are you a mandor? How about you?
I work for the district.
All right, now let's keep it. Are you the mandor? Are you the mandor?
Yes.
Any luck? There's no one else on the mic. Mike, there's no one else on the, on the forty outside the hallway. There's about there.
You said you're not a mandor, right? So what do I function here?
So I work for the district and the elementary director. Okay.
So, all right, introduce yourself, please, and then we'll give you three minutes to address the board.
Three minutes?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
I am speaking here to, about child harassment and abuse in the school, and you're permitting only three minutes? How is that possible? I'm speaking about child harassment and abuse, and you're giving me three minutes?
Please.
Why is that? Does it make sense to anybody? I cannot speak? I cannot explain?
Is your item as a non-agenda item? Is something that you can address the board?
Why am I instructed to speak about abuse of my, of my child? Why? Why I'm not permitted? Two minutes? Is that all? Is that okay with everyone?
Is it not on our agenda?
Not on our agenda? Okay. Appeal to the Board of Education, Pleasant Valley Community High School, our school district. At my appeal hearing with Mr. Zimmer on April twelve, twenty twenty-one, I requested that Mr. Zimmer formally record my complaint against Mr. Paget, apparently abusive and predatory behavior regarding my son, Janusz Goczewski. I strongly suspected that Mr. Paget pursued all the boys in similar fashion, and all the parents might have complained as well. I wanted my complaint to be formally, formally recorded to help establish a pattern of predatory behavior on Mr. Paget's part. Mr. Zimmer, however, refused to record my complaint or even acknowledge my request, flatly refused to acknowledge my complaint even, not even recording it. I described Mr. Zimmer's refusal in my response to the appeal hearing of April twelve, twenty twenty-one, dated April seventeen, which was forwarded to Mr. Strush, who was the next, and as he claimed, final appeals term. At the appeal hearing with Mr. Strush on April nineteen, twenty twenty-one, I again requested that my complaint against Mr. Paget's behavior be officially recorded, but Mr. Strush refused as well, but not bothering to even respond to my request, right? And not get any response. The appeal follows a disciplinary decision against my son, Janusz Goczewski, who is also an honor student with a GPA of four point zero six. Since Janusz was a frequent target of Mr. Paget's disciplinary intervention, he decided to prove that he is being targeted without merit for doing something he thought would be beyond reproach. As he passed all the students in the hallway when walking from class to class, he would greet passersby by, by making a statement, "Stop Asian hate." This statement was posted by his fellow student on, on Facebook, a public space for other students to, to see with the intent to engage in public discourse. He passed that student in the hallway on his way to class apparently twice, without even realizing that he already greeted her once before with her own post, "Stop Asian hate." The first response from the student to my son was, quote, "Shut the fuck up," end of quote. The second response was, quote, "Shut the fuck up, you racist bitch," end of quote. That's, that's two responses that he's got. Both of these responses are vulgar, hateful, and offensive, particularly the second one, and any student engaging in such speech should, should be disciplined. But as it happened, it was Janusz who was disciplined with in-school suspension for simply saying, "Stop Asian hate." So my son just repeated, "Stop Asian hate," and he got in-school suspension. The other students, I don't even want to repeat it. I don't know. I mean, I don't care whether she got disciplined or not, but, but my son simply should, right? In my response of April seventeen, I detail Mr. Zimmer's account of the incident not only as deceitful, but basically outright lies, when Mr. Zimmer justifies the other students, the other student calling my son racist because he was, quote, "Mocking only female Asian student," end, end of quote, despite the fact that, that said, it's, that he said it to almost everybody he met, he met in the hallway. So he did not isolate that, that student based on her ethnic identity, right? He was repeating it to everybody he met in, in the hallway. For the same reason, claiming that he intended to cause emotional harm is obviously false, as he casually repeated this to his friends as well. Mr. Zimmer's statement that Janusz was, quote, "Getting in the face," end, end of quote, is also an outright lie, and this can be easily observed, observed just by viewing the school video recording of the incident. If the board has the courage and interest to review the evidence and not listen to Mr. Zimmer lies, then it can be plain shit. You should see for yourself, right? Have the courage. The question is why Mr. Zimmer felt so confident in refusing to record my complaint against Mr. Paget and completely falsified the facts of what actually happened during the incident? I should also doubt that, that Mr. Zimmer had the audacity to threaten me with additional charges against my son were before coming if I pursued the appeal any further. He actually dared to threaten me with charges against my son. I mean, can you imagine that? I mean, how long can you be? Threaten a child with additional charges? How can you do that? What I? What I? All this was possible because Mr. Zimmer knew well that no matter what the facts and evidence say, his decision would be upheld by Mr. Strouch as the appeal process will end there. This case proves that this appeal process where only coworkers, quote unquote, review each other, the decision with no outside review of the evidence possible leads to corruption. As it is unreasonable to expect that the administration would actually contradict its own officials, right? Mr. Zimmer can lie about the facts and the evidence because no one will contradict him. I mean, it's completely unlikely that those officials will review each other and then contradict each other of opinion. They will always uphold each other. I mean, that's expected. That's why the board needs to insert itself in the appeal process as the final step. Because outside review is needed. Inside review is laughable. It can never be reviewed. I mean, it will be always corrupt, especially here, right? Mr. Strouch, in his final decision, upholding, of course, that of Mrs. Zimmer, that not even bother to provide any rational explanation that could justify. How is that possible despite all the facts and evidence to the contrary, right? He just, he just uphold it. He reviewed and he upheld without explaining why. Despite that, obviously contradicting, everything is contradicting him. I call on the board to have the interest and courage to look at this case and serve itself permanently as the final appeal step. Without this step, our children will be subject to abuse and intimidation. Mr. Paget already told Janusz, my son, that he needs just one more in-school suspension to be possibly expelled from school. And I bet he is ready to serve him that suspension at his earliest convenience. My son was already told that he's got two suspensions. He needs only one and he will be expelled. Right? Just waiting for that one more suspension, which I bet they will serve him pretty soon, right? I bet Mr. Zimmer will take care of that as well.
Thank you for the information.
Any questions? Anybody here? I can clarify anything?
Since the item that you brought up tonight is not on the agenda, it's not something that we can respond to or even ask any questions.
It's about abuse of a student. You cannot respond to an abuse of a student. What are you here for? What are you doing here?
If you let me finish, it's something that we will look into with the information that you provided us. And we will let you know if it's going to be on and off coming with that.
So you will look at the actual evidence and not statements like by someone like Mr. Zimmer, right? Or even Mr. Strouch? Okay, as long as you actually do that. Yes, sir.
The rule is right here for you. If you have agreements, you can actually file. You've got to file it the Wednesday before the next meeting. And then it can get on and then we'll actually be able to respond to it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the legal course that goes through.
Okay, I don't think I was, I wasn't informed about that. What's the reason?
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have something else for us?
Oh, I did. And it looks like I'm not alone. But I'm wondering about procedure. Clearly, it's COVID-related that so many of us are here tonight. Would it be better to hear the update that was on the agenda later and then?
Yeah, if you could wait until I go with updates.
I think that'd be best.
All right. Are there any questions regarding this evening's consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Mrs. Pompel to approve the evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I approve. Approval of those. Start with the general fund.
I move the general fund warrants issued in a total amount of $342,228.72 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Mr. Ayers, that general fund warrants be issued in payment of invoices presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nutrition fund.
I move the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $78,106.28 in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Pompel, second by Mrs. Anderson, that nutrition fund warrants be issued in payment of invoices presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Elementary junior high activity fund.
I move the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $350.28 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in payment of invoices presented. All in favor, say aye. Or any questions? Sorry. All in favor, say aye.
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 High school activity fund.
I move that high school activity fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $15,720.76 in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Mrs. Pompel, that high school activity fund warrants be issued in payment of invoices presented. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Management fund.
I move that management fund warrants issued in a total amount of $26 in payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Mrs. Brockman, that management fund warrants be issued in payment of invoices presented. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Capital projects fund.
I move that capital project fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $28,740.4 in payment of invoice presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Dixon, that capital project fund warrants be issued in payment of invoices presented. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Peple fund.
I move that peple fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $86,128.49 in payment of invoice presented.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Anderson, second by Mrs. Brockman, that peple fund warrants be issued in payment of invoices presented. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Internal service fund.
I move the internal service fund warrants, '62-30 through '62-34, be issued in a total of $448,570.9 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Mrs. Pompel, that internal service fund warrants, '62-30 through '62-34, be issued in payment of invoices presented. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Trust fund.
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $2,035.91 in payment of invoice presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Dixon, that trust fund warrants be issued in payment of invoices presented. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Service learning update, Mr. Zimmer?
Okay. Each board meeting, we have been providing you with an update on service learning. And tonight would be our final one before heading into graduation of where we stand. And at this time, Ms. Myatt will provide you an update and some pretty good news.
All right. So it's even better than what you've got for packets. I can tell you that. We are down now to 18 total seniors with under 20 hours. And we only have four who have not responded to us calling them in and trying to create plans and such. Four is a great number. And that's where we think we may end up. Whether or not all of those are going to be candidates for graduation in other areas, we are not sure yet. But we have four that we are currently concerned with and we continue to follow up with them. After talking with Mr. Erickson and Mr. Paget today, we are not recommending what we wondered if we would have to recommend. So we are not recommending that we say you can walk even if not, because we don't feel there's a need for that. The only thing that we are asking for is a little leniency. We have some students who have come in, who have created contracts and plans and will finish their hours. But it will take them past our May 20 deadline through that next weekend because they need that time. And as they have been fulfilling their contracts, we feel like the leniency is a good thing in that instance. So if the board is okay with that, we will make those decisions internally as long as they have the contract and they've been faithful to it. But we are very pleased. As we look forward to next year, we're going to look at a lot of things. The events that we did on Fridays really saved a number of people. And it has pointed up an area of equity that we need to look at in that while there are many students who say, I need to go do this and someone puts them in the car and drives them, there are some students who do not have that ability. And so we will plan our events that we do at the high school so that even if you could not do anything except those early out events, you could still complete the requirement. So that's what we will do as we go forward so that we can ensure that everyone has equal opportunity to be able to do that. Questions that you have?
See, we don't normally have early outs on Fridays. Like next year, we didn't have early outs.
No, but there are the early outs on Wednesdays. And because I don't do professional development, while teachers are doing professional development, I am doing that with them because I have different professional development, like the service learning conference that I went to a couple of weeks ago. But, so we will be able to provide those opportunities still.
So now that we have our seniors taken care of, I have a question about juniors.
Yes.
So those 23 juniors with incomplete freshman sophomore hours, is that incomplete even with the changes we made due to COVID last spring?
Yes, yes. They were only required to have 15 hours. And there were 23 of them who have not completed those.
So do we have, is that our next target?
We feel like when the summer opens up, that's going to happen for a lot of them. We've had a lot of questions from sophomores where they've said, can we wait and do it during the summer? And the answer is yes. They get an F on the report card. But once it is finished, that section actually gets deleted. So it would never show up on the transcript and no one would ever see it. It's basically just a placeholder. And so we've had some who have said, we're going to opt for that right now because we feel like we can do it over the summer. And we're doing the same thing with the juniors.
In a full list of opportunities for them, they're available, obviously, for all students to choose where they get their hours.
Yes. Yeah, we send out new opportunities every Wednesday. We put things on the service learning website. We've gotten a whole bunch of summer stuff that's going to go out. So people should be able to get their hours pretty easily during the summer. There's a number of things opening up.
Great.
And we continue to work with them to try and find those things when they come in and talk to us, so.
Great, thank you.
We'll continue to look at those. It's not uncommon that we have juniors who have freshman sophomore hours that are incomplete. And when I started in the middle of February, we had 10 still who had not completed their junior senior hours at that point who were graduating. Now we're down to only one in that category. But that is a common occurrence. So we do see that. And I think COVID hasn't helped that. But I think we'll get over that hump after the summer. I think the summer is going to be a very busy time for us when it usually is not. Usually we wait until the fall and then we get everything that happened over the summer. I think we're going to see a lot more movement in the summer so they can complete those requirements.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you on behalf of everyone in terms of the work that you've put into this to help our kids to find a contract, to find ways to get this completed. It's taking a lot of effort, but very well worth it. So thank you.
We've found a lot of neat things for them to do that I think we will also continue in the future because for some of those equity reasons, there are some things that just will work out better for some of our students. Students who have to work a 40-hour job while they're going to school need something that had some flexibility. And due to COVID, we've found some things that actually fulfill that, that will continue to go on past COVID, that I think are viable options for our students and still complete all of the things that we want them to do. We also, as we look towards the future, it's a lot about making those connections. It's been very interesting. I've had people who have contacted me and said, I had coffee with so-and-so and they said you helped them with this. And we've opened up the office to do a little more on the helping side because a lot of times we've found if we say, if you're interested, email this person, we don't see the same kind of movement as when I can say, I need 10 people to do this. It's X amount of hours. And then we signed up for Sign Up Genius and we use those. And I coordinate all the people for them and say, here's your 10 people. And we've actually filled more openings that way because it's a direct link that when they see it, they hit the link, they sign up, they're done. And there's not that extra step in there. So we've been working with a number of the organizations to help them even more by providing that service to them. And it makes it easier for our students as well.
I saw that ad. I thought that was a good ad. I saw my newspaper the other day.
Thank you.
Are you still looking at kind of modifying it going forward where they can do more of a, like, I kind of related to like a passion project that they're doing in junior high? Is that, are you still looking at?
For me personally, I mean, and Mr. Erickson and I are going to start talking about these things next week now that we got them all through prom and all of the other things. There are a number of things that I would like to see us make some adjustments to. Right now, we require them to do service, but we don't do all of the service learning portions of what service learning should be. There are some reflection things that are not done for ninth and 10th graders. When it comes to our 11th and 12th graders, I'd like to see them actually be able to present. We do a one-on-one interview for our 10th graders, but we don't do anything at the high school that includes a panel interview. And those are becoming much more popular with corporations these days. Any teacher or district employee will tell you, we do panel interviews here. So it would be great to do that. We want to make some changes to be more inclusive of our special ed students. Very often, we just say, yes, they finished, rather than giving them credit for. And some of them are doing a number of hours that we would like to reward for that. But our goal would be that freshman sophomore would allow them to do different things and choose from any number of activities in order to lead more of a career exploration so that they could find out what they were interested in. And then 11, 12 would be that passion project and not necessarily one place or two places, but however many places it took in order to be able to accomplish that. So if you said, I'm thinking of education and I'd like to do things in education, we would find things that you could do. If you were looking at people with different abilities, we can find opportunities for you to work with any different kinds of people with different ability levels within the community. If you're looking at homelessness in the Quad Cities, there are organizations that we could pair you up with. So our hope would be that we would do that. We have Gigi's Playhouse talk to us about a really wonderful project that we're going to try and pair with somebody who might want to be an event planner that they could do for them and do a lot of the legwork. And that would be a great thing. And our hope between combining service learning and the career center and our new Zello that we're using with students starting next year is so that as they do this, they look at the job skills that they're earning, the things that they can do, like this gives me somebody to be a reference that maybe I didn't have before. Because they can talk about, I come on time. I do my work with pride. I care about my skills. I'm personable with other people. I'm a good team player. So we're going to try and do that. And then their presentation would be to a panel and they would take time to present what they did and why they chose that and then explain their service projects that they did. And then we would ask them questions rather than the reflection on the PowerPoint that they do right now. It'd be much more interactive. And our hope is that it would also give us the opportunity to provide them with some feedback from the organizations where they volunteered. So that's what's coming down the pipe. I mean, we still have to finesse all of that. And once it is, I'm sure I will be back here presenting again as we talk about how we're moving forward. But the goal is to do more of that service learning. When I went to this National Service Learning Conference, so many good ideas. One of which that I'm hoping we get to do is they do a thing much like a science fair, but it's a service learning fair. And we can invite local businesses and we can award people for the work that they're doing. Because while we have some students who say, I have to do 40 hours and they do 40 and they're done. We have one senior who's graduating this year who did 410 hours. And that's amazing. And that should be recognized. And right now, we are not recognizing that. And I think that's something that we can do a better job of as well to really acknowledge that many of these students go above and beyond. beyond.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So it's like being May 10th and having about this meeting tonight, and also the 24th, our last one of the school year with 18 days remaining. Just wanted to take this opportunity to update all of you and kind of where we are with our COVID updates since our April 12th board meeting that we had. As you recall, February 16th is when we came back 100%. We would continue to watch things, how things transpired, being in the building 100%. So when you look at February 16th through April 12th, that time span, as I shared last time at the last board meeting, we had about a 0.62% COVID return rate in our buildings, and that could be either positive cases or quarantine cases, and that would equate to about 30 individuals per day on average. April 13th through May 12th, or May 10th tonight, we're at 0.63, so again, very, very consistent from 0.62 to 0.63 in our numbers. So again, roughly around 30 people impacted. When you look at positive quarantine numbers, in that first dates I gave you, it was six positive average and 18 quarantine. Now we've been running about eight positives and 16 quarantines, so only give or take two, so things have been very steady across the board. If you recall back on April 12th is when we made the decision at that point to look at if we are taking away certain restrictions, what impact does that have on our students coming back 100%? At that time, we talked about with everything going on in the springtime amongst us, that when we go outside for PE, K-12 PE, or outside for recess, if kids are outside and they're socially distancing, you know, plenty catch from a distance, or that might be, or walking around, they could lower the masks if they wanted to, as their optional choice, blow the nose, blow the chin, whichever they would prefer at that time. As stated, since then, we have not seen a drastic change in terms of any of our numbers, which I've talked about tonight. So at that last April 12th meeting, we also talked about the idea of looking at, we had put the table dividers back on February 16th to see if that would help in any way. It'd be my recommendation at this time, as we look with 18 days left, that we continue to look at with our restrictions, what impact one has at the time you take one away or reduce something. So the plan would be tomorrow to do a video for our parents to let them know that, again, based upon conversations tonight, in other words, that we'd see that we would reduce the table dividers down on Wednesday so parents are aware that tomorrow, the next day would be the day when we'd actually implement that. And again, at that point, we'd have 17 days left, and the school would kind of see how things transpire as that next move. You know, if you look ahead, and we remember right now, this last week, Hy-Vee had contacted us in terms of looking at vaccinations for students, anyone who's 16 years or older. We just simply sent an email to our parents, just asking if they want, if we would do this or not, if enough people would register to do so. We do not know exactly what that number will be because really it's not on us, we're just facilitating that piece. This coming Friday, May 14th, and the second shot will be on June 4th. Any students who are interested in that between ages of 16 on up will fill out the form from Hy-Vee, parent information, all those sort of things we've filled out. And then from 8:00 to noon on those two days of high school on their off time of PE or study hall, they can go ahead and receive a vaccination. We anticipate somewhere between, you know, 65 and maybe 100 students based upon just the initial survey. Then we just sent out asking if they want that service. So we know that as of right now. What we continue to watch would be is if with vaccinations, you know, will it reduce down to age 12? It sounds like that could be coming yet this coming month, and we'll continue to watch that as what that could be. You know, as we move into summer, I'm not sure that we would, you know, partner with Hy-Vee or anything of that nature to offer that because it's during the summer, because that's when it occurs. Parents could make that choice as they make the choice now for vaccinations. But those are things that we keep watching at to help hopefully keep things safe in our schools, with our staff and everyone in the buildings. You know, as you look ahead to the future, as I said, you know, we're coming down to the end of school here now. What does summer look like? We'll continue to watch that. This first day of school, almost three months away, as we know, I can't predict what's going to happen in the next three months. We'll continue to watch and visit with Iowa Public Health, our Scott County Health Department, anything from the CDC, what their recommendations are, we keep reading those, and kind of see what options do we have in terms of that, or local school districts. You know, we do have a summer school for high school students here in June, and then at the end of July into August, we have the elementary and junior high summer school. So we'll kind of watch and see. As you look to the future, in August 2030, when school starts, we'll see where we are at. You know, really, the options that could occur really is kind of twofold, maybe three, kind of how you look at the third one. When it comes to masks and wearing masks, number one, if that is the recommendation that's being given to us, we'll consider that. But ideally, the other two really kind of go in line with each other. Would be an optional option for kids. If someone wants to wear a mask, that could be an option. Or it's the no mask option as well. You know, I think right now, it's, I would have envisioned there will be students who, if we're in the optional category, that some kids will still want to wear them, or some staff members still want to wear them, and that is something that would be acceptable. And just we work through that with people. So right now, man, if you ask all of us around local school districts and kind of what we're seeing, that might be the one we'd like to land at. But again, I don't know what summer brings, but all those points that we have considered since day one, conversations that we've had around the board, we will continue to keep thinking through all those. Number one, provide a high-quality learning environment for our kids, and also a safe and secure environment for our kids. So we'll continue to monitor that, see what options we have and where that lands us come end of July, first part of August, with really those two options. I anticipate right now, again, taking the table dividers down, that next school year we start, they would not be needed. And again, it's one step closer to being back to where we believe we are from pre-COVID 14 months ago, when that changed everything that we are used to doing. So the only thing I would say is just when you look at other updates that we've received, you know, since our last board meeting, I think some measures that we have in place, when you look at CDC guidelines right now, I had it released on April 27th, it still talks about small groups inside, if you're vaccinated or with each other, small groups can be unmasked. Outside, again, as long as you're socially distanced, and if you're not socially distanced in a large group, they recommend being masked. So those are some things that we're looking at, but again, for the most part, we'll also assess where we are with baseball, softball come this summer. It might be a case where wearing masks in, but once you're seated, we'll have to see in terms of just not having those being required at that time being outdoors. So we're working through the Iowa High School Athletic Association and the local A.D.s in terms of what that will look like for this coming baseball, softball season. Questions from the board?
My question as far as taking down the dividers, and I imagine the array, or I guess as far as quarantine goes, so we take down the dividers, someone at their table tests positive, is it going to be a, the number of individuals that might be affected by quarantine, does that potentially increase, or how does that, I guess that will probably matter?
That's a very good question. So when you take down the table dividers, depending on where the kids are sitting, and you know, right now, they're all in that, they kind of have their groups that they are sitting with, we know who the students are, they watch that piece of it. So if someone does test positive, you would have some individuals who would be quarantined around them. The question is, is it the kids right directly across from the necks of them and sometimes behind them? Again, if it is a positive case, it would probably impact two or three more students than you would have impacted previously because of the guidelines that we have to follow. But again, looking at our numbers, having six to eight per week on average, again, we're not where we were before when we were having 30-plus kids, you know, positive during the week, and we're looking through that. So again, hopefully it's way down the number of quarantine kids, but yes, that would be a factor once you take those down, you're quarantined to work through our kids.
Brian, this is McKeel, can you hear me?
Yes.
So today, the FDA did approve the Pfizer vaccine for 12 to 15-year-olds. Are you going to be incorporating that into the vaccination program that you have implemented so far?
You know, McKeel, it's a question tough to answer right now until we know where kind of things land, but here's what I would say with that, is that, you know, again, it's a parent choice. When you look at timelines of where we are, and today being the 10th, when we give a vaccination at, on the 14th, which is Friday, exactly three weeks later is June 4th, which is our last day of school. So I think it'd be very difficult for us to advertise that and be able to offer that between now and the end of the school year. We'll kind of see where the vaccination could have come with what their numbers are, what they can offer, but right now, McKeel, I think we'd probably have to wait on that, on that age group, as far as us partnering with Hy-Vee.
What kind of guidance have you gotten from like the Scott County Health Department in terms of when, like, do they say to you, if your numbers are this, this is when you should be unmasked? Or are they looking at CDC guidance, or what does that look like?
You know, like, when you talk to the health department, you talk to our local health department, state health department, when you read articles, no one can give you what that exact number is. I mean, they just can't, you know, in terms of that spread and where things are. I think what we're tending to see now is probably more around the decision of masking, unmasking more around vaccination, ages, and what's happening within our community with the percentage. What I mean by that is when you look ahead, there is a, I mean, the health departments would say there's a chance you could potentially be starting school in masks, I mean, that has been stated, but no one knows with this whole three months out. But that is said, I think you saw a lot of things changing in the last month. Number one, when with vaccination numbers you get, you know, with the age coming down to 16, I think that made some changes with what people are saying in terms of opening things up. I think you saw some of that with the CDC back in the end of April. As you look around our community, I think you see some things starting to give a little more freedom. But still, you can go to grocery stores, like some of our restaurants in the area, I mean, people, they still want you to wear masks when you're there, but I think you're going to start seeing that disappear as there's outdoor opportunities, the weather changes. So that's been kind of our, maybe my synopsis for what we're hearing right now. And we still meet every other week with the health department here in town, in South Cats.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from our guests? And for the people that would like to speak, just come up to the podium and just state your name, please.
Thank you. My name's Brandon Hartley, and I really should have, should have asked my question last week, there's so many. I just, I wanted to first say, really, thank you to all of you, school board. I'm a teacher myself, and I did not really sign up for a job to make literally life-and-death decisions, and I know you school board members really didn't. So I have a tremendous amount of sympathy for what you are going through. I did want to just, I wanted to kind of see what you all were thinking about next year. You know, this year is a mess, just a smoking-hot mess, and so it does make a lot of sense, you know, what, I think, what we've done. And I have always been very, very, very concerned about the virus. My, I've had family members that have died. It is clearly very, very dangerous and serious. At the same time, I am, I can't help feeling that we are hurting our kids in what we're doing here. Nowhere near as much as someone's death, of course. Of course, it's not the same. My son's inconvenience is not worth someone's life, but it's, it's that specific danger versus a diffuse danger. You know, we're hurting all of our kids in ways, you know, hundreds of millions of them throughout the world, and unfortunately, you all just have to kind of decide this, this balance here. I think it seems like it's very, very likely that we will have access to vaccines for all people by next fall. And so I just, I really do hope that we can balance giving our kids the same social growth and experiences that we had when we were young with legitimate health concerns, and maybe not letting, I think sometimes we're too worried that we're going to overreact to just, it's not serious, but then the opposite, of course, is also true, that we sort of get addicted to health precautions and we think this is just how we should live now. And I think that that could be very detrimental to our children. So anyway, I know you've probably heard all of this before, I don't want to speak anymore. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Brandon.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joanie Abbott. I wanted to thank you for hearing me this evening and taking the time to be here and hearing all of us out. I trust you all will do so with an openness of heart. I approach you today not only as our elected school board members, but as our neighbors, our fellow friends, as parents whose children are together in class and in various sporting events together, and also those are members of our community. As I humbly ask you to please consider the following list of questions that I have for you, I'm also going to submit these to you in writing so that way you have all of them. I just, it's going to be kind of quick just for the sake of time, and that way those can be appropriately answered as well. So I'm concerned, I've been concerned for our children and their safety. I'm concerned that exemptions are not a normal part of your vernacular in your conversation in any school board meeting or in any video the superintendent puts out. There are those who cannot safely wear masks and who cannot safely take the vaccine, and who cannot and should not be allowed or should be determined to just, to share personal medical information. That is nobody else's business. I was asked to not wear a mask. I was, my response this evening was that I cannot wear one safely. I fear that perhaps you guys will be held for liability at some, at some point with the American Disability, Americans with Disabilities Act for discriminating against those who have non-obvious disabilities. There are many of us who are concerned that the prior and current masking policies for our children have been implemented with sleight of hand by this board. We need to know and understand exactly who, how, and when this voting body implemented the first mask policy and how changes have been made ever since to mirror the ongoing changes of the governing bodies like the CDC. In other words, who are you taking directives from regarding a face mask policy in the PV School District? How are the decisions being made regarding face mask policies? What authority is requiring or compelling you to follow CDC guidelines? When the Iowa Department of Public Health, Scott County Health Department, and the CDC are in conflict, how are you deciding who you are following? For instance, you kept a social distancing policy of six feet. It has been lowered to three feet, and no changes have been made by this board. Again, the dividers were brought up this evening. Again, the CDC said that those were not necessary, and you continue to spend tax dollars in order to put them up a week after that recommendation. Have the individual teachers in the PV School District been asked by their input in making the current policies? Will you accept a legal right to personal choice for them to opt out should they oppose? And if not, why not? Did this board deliberate, discuss, and vote on the current masking policy? Or is this what is called soft law, where you have abdicated your responsibilities to administrators who get to wield discretion as they see fit, resulting in, on the fly policies established, such as segregating kids whose parents have the common sense to secure an exemption from your unproven mask policies? Is PV School System receiving any funding from the county, state, or any other source for compliance to any COVID policies? And if so, from what organizations and how much? What are the risks and costs associated with not following these directives? Do you consider yourselves exempt from liability of your policies? And this recent partnership with Hy-Vee for the experimental, non-FDA-approved COVID injection, have you considered the liability for those who experience death, injury, or adverse reaction? Children under 18 can't even get a tattoo or certain body piercings. They can't buy alcohol, they can't join the military, they cannot even purchase cigarettes. Why? According to the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, changing brains means that adolescents act differently from adults. Pictures of the brain in action show that adolescents' brains are working differently than adults when they make decisions or solve problems. Their actions are guided by more emotional reactive amygdala and less by thoughtful, logical frontal cortex, which we know is not fully developed until about 25, 26 years old. Have you all consulted? Have you all consulted, you're a lawyer, about this decision? Are any of you aware of what VAERS is? The National Injury Compensation Program by our government has something called VAERS, which is the Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting System, a database of injury and death caused by these experimental shots. Have you looked to see what the numbers are yet for the vaccine you are promoting to schoolchildren, schoolwide? As of today through April 30th, there have been 157,277 reports, 3,387 deaths, 10,715 hospitalizations, 21,623 trips to urgent care, 26,046 office visits to doctors, 834 reports of anaphylaxis, and 942 reports of Bell's palsy post-injection. And the kicker? The manufacturer of these vaccines have zero liability for these experimental shots. None. Not one manufacturer since 1986 has, can be held liable. So who is going to assume the responsibility? There are children who have died of heart attacks from this experimental vaccine. Does this district want to be the one to assume liability by promoting and partnering with a pharmacy who is covered by something called the PREP Act under emergency use? They are covered. You might not be. You might want to look into it. I have more, but I think I'm just going to let everyone else talk. That's all I have to have for you to consider. I will submit all of these things in writing, and I will expect a response. Thank you so much.
I'm a mom of three. I'm a local physician. I've been here many times. Always the same agenda is that I want our kids taken care of. I want our kids to be safe. My agenda's the same as everyone else. Number one, unmasking. What is our number of cases? Saying that we're following CDC is not appropriate because the CDC is guided by Dr. Fauci, who doesn't care about a small school in Iowa and what it's doing to our children. So what is our number? You said we have six to eight per week. I looked up on our Scott County website, we had five cases between 0 and 17 two weeks ago and four cases last week. So that's not our kids because there's not six to eight children in our school district when there's only four cases in the entire Scott County that are 0 to 17 years old. So when are we ready to pull them down? Because our number is never going to be zero, and I said this last time, I said it the time before, our kids are supposed to have germs. They're supposed to be exposed. Their immune systems are building right now, and we're not allowing their immune systems to build because every day this is in their face. How did you get your antibodies? And you got your antibodies. You were all exposed to all of these things as you grew up. This is what our kids are supposed to have. You said that you're focused on our children's safety, but their safety is being exposed to things so that they can build their immune systems. This is, the mask is not for their safety, it's for someone else. My other concern is we take the mask down, and then all of a sudden, we have a flu case. We have two COVID cases. Who gets to say when the masks go back on? Do you guys just say tomorrow, you have to come to school with the mask on? Who gets to say that then? Because that's what we've done so far, is that you just say, well, you, in order to come here, you have to. So let's say we start in August, and it's great, but then we have one single COVID case, and now everybody says, no, we have to mask again. And again, we have no, we have no say in that for our own kids. This is a virus that has a less than 0.03% mortality for children. So we're not protecting kids with this. So that's not our goal, and that's fine if that's not your goal, but don't say it's our goal. This is, this actually is outside of COVID, but it does have to do with COVID. We received an email this week from our school nurses about new guidelines, and I would actually love feedback about this, on how these guidelines were established in terms of if you call your child out sick and if they get to come back. Are you guys all aware of them? Yeah, all of the board, you're aware of them? Like, how are they established and how, if I could just get some feedback on that? Because I was actually shocked when I read that email.
So those were originally set by the Scott County Health Department, and going through the process with them is what it should look like, and also some of those were CDC guidelines in terms of the identifiers, two symptoms or one symptom?
Because this is what it says. If you call your child out and they have a cough, they have a runny nose, they have a headache, you have to do one of three things. Number one, you have to get a COVID test for that child. Number two, you set that child out for 10 days out of school. They sit out of school for 10 days. Or number three, you make your doctor's appointment, you get a doctor's note that says, this child doesn't have COVID, they have blank. The idea that a child is coughing and now we can't send them to school is absurd because every person coughs one to two times per hour to clear their airway, every single person. There are more than 200 viruses that will cause a cough. There are more than 100 other reasons that you have a cough, including breathing in particles from a mask. And now we're telling our kids they can't cough or they can't go to school. This is preposterous to me, and I have to believe that this is an undesired effect that we're having by telling our kids they can't, they can't blow their nose, they can't have a cough, or they don't get to go to school. I think these guidelines are preposterous, and I honestly cannot think that you, you all think that this is a good idea. You're telling parents they now have to take this time off of work and take them to school or to the doctor and pay their co-pay. Or when you care that much about having kids in school, you just say, never mind, stay at home for 10 days. That's, that is preposterous to me. My last question is literally about the vaccine. Obviously, everybody has thought about the vaccine, and it's not a vaccine, it's gene therapy because it's not proven. But undoubtedly, looking towards August of 2021, what are your thoughts regarding vaccine policy? I know you all have thought about it and you've talked about it because it's that important, and you're now promoting it, but where are our parents going to get the choice to have that or not for school and for sports? I know it's being pushed for sports already because the kids don't want to miss their sports. So I know it's already being pushed, but are our kids and our parents going to get the choice of whether or not they vaccinate their kids? And do we have to have some exemption to not? And if you haven't thought about it, when is that decision going to be made?
So actually, just kind of that piece, when you look at the flu vaccination that we have, and those things that are state-driven, we have to work with our nurses and the state board for those. Unless someone has a medical exemption or religious exemption, they are supposed to receive their immunization, all immunizations, not even, I mean, take the flu out of there. It's the measles, it's those different things that they would have. If this comes down as that is one of the things that they have to receive from the State Department, then we have to address it. But right now, it is strictly a voluntary option, and that's for staff, that's for anyone in our team and for students. We are not going out and saying to anybody that they have to have that vaccination or be in school.
I feel like when we talk about it, though, everything is such a push to get it. And the other, my other concern is that when I send my kids back to school and they don't have their vaccine, they now have to be masked. Because that's what it's going to come down to. And I, I'm so afraid. What I don't understand is that I think all of us can acknowledge that COVID is a disease of older people, like pneumonia, like shingles. We do not give children the pneumovax 23. We do not give children the shingles vaccine because it is of older people. To even call this as a vaccine is wrong because it's experimental, so you are all signing up to be part of an experiment, which is fine. Everybody gets to have their choice, that's what I'm saying. I want my choice for me and my kids. But why it would possibly be an option for a group where they have less than 0.03% mortality is mind-blowing to me. But I know that's still part of the discussion, and I think most of us need to know where you guys stand so we know where to put our kids safely in August.
Hold them up.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Jill Zabata, and I have two children at Hopewell Elementary in first grade and in kindergarten. I am a functional health practitioner, and I've been working with patients through this whole situation the last 14 months. I work with people daily on building up their immune system and keeping them or improving their health. Last Monday, I believe it was May 3rd, I, along with some other of the people in the room, started a petition just to get an idea of who was for optional masks in the Pleasant Valley School System. The petition reads, "The use of masks in the Pleasant Valley School District in Iowa should be optional and determined by the student's parents, guardians, effective immediately. It should not be a requirement as determined by the school district. By signing this petition, I agree to the above statement and to attest to being a Pleasant Valley taxpayer, an employee of the Pleasant Valley School District, and/or have one or more children attending the Pleasant Valley School System." As of this morning, we had 606 people sign this petition. And I know when talking to some other people, there are plenty of others who didn't sign because of the repercussions that they felt that they would entail if they did. So I have this, if somebody wants to take a look. So I'm here to encourage the release of the mask mandate in the Pleasant Valley School System and to allow the use of masks in school to be optional and a choice made by the student's parent or guardian. There has not been any proven effectiveness that the masks prevent or slow SARS-CoV-2, yet in my clinical experience over the past year, an increase of negative effects in our children, such as increased anxiety, depression, acne, headaches, bacterial infections, dizziness, and in fact, a lowered immune system has been seen. I have documented several studies that debunk the effectiveness of masks in SARS-CoV-2, including the label that is blatantly stated on the mask box. That warning reads, "This mask is an AirLube mask. This product is not a respirator and will not provide any protection against COVID-19 coronavirus or other viral viruses or contaminants. Wearing an AirLube mask does not reduce the risk of contracting any disease or infection. User is solely responsible for the selection of appropriate personal protective equipment for the setting and application." So in fact, studies have proven that consistent wearing of masks not only increases carbon monoxide in the body, causing adverse effects, but you're 13 times more likely to cause a viral or bacterial infection, excuse me. Why is this? These masks, after a short period of time, retain moisture and have poor ventilation. This creates a reservoir for the pathogenic growth. A wet, trapped environment where your own microbes and your other environmental pathogens stick to the inside of the mask and begin to colonize. Now you have created a wet microbial habitat for your face. Not to mention viral particles are actually smaller than the holes in the mask, so they're not really protecting. Masks were meant to protect against larger droplets, such as during surgery when a patient had an open surgical wound. Dr. Fauci, who I know is really quoted a lot during this whole situation the last 14 months, he himself stated, and I quote, "There is no reason to be walking around with a mask. When you are in the middle of an outbreak, wearing a mask may make people feel a little better, and it may even block a droplet, but it's not providing the perfect protection that people think it is, and often there are unintended consequences." End quote. Socialization, human contact, and the visibility of facial expressions are vital to our children's growth and development, and they're really, really for their overall school experience and quality of life. I mean, I never imagined that my kindergartner and my first grader would be starting their school career with this experience, because I'm sure nobody has, and nobody asked for this, right? I'm sure that's how a lot of people feel. I have a child with anxiety, and it's, it's been painful this last year to have or go to school with a mask, but also to stay home. There has been multiple schools throughout the U.S. that during the last school year did not shut down. They did not go hybrid, or they did not require masks or mandate them, and they did not show any increase in outbreaks or cases. We know the population that was much more affected, the elderly. We know that children have been shown not to be transmitters or are at very low risk for transmitting this disease to adults. It was in the Canadian Medical Association Journal that it was stated, "Children are not drivers of the infection or the spread of SARS-CoV-2, and children have also been proven to be a low risk of transmitting to adults." So our elderly and our teachers have had the option to get the vaccine, right? So at this point, I do not see any reason why our children should have to wear a mask. I certainly believe in choice. I believe that if there is a risk in anything, it should be a choice, whether it is the injection or whether it is a mask. So if our staff and our teachers have had, you know, the option to get the vaccine and are vaccinated, then there is no reason really why our children should still be wearing or have to wear masks unless certain parents feel like they should. So it's time to make them optional, give our children a chance to experience school as they deserve and the right to breathe fresh air.
At this time, just going through, I know we have, if anyone else, one or more person wants to speak, you're more than welcome to. If there's a different view that you need to express tonight, we need to have other things we need to accomplish as well, but we will listen to every you to share, look forward to the email you mentioned you'll send as well, and see what we can do in terms of the comments you shared tonight. We are definitely hearing what you're saying, but I guess we got to move on to other things too, and I don't want to disrespect any of you, but please respect that part of it. So ma'am, please introduce your name and we'll listen to that.
My name's Allison Weir. I'm a parent of kids in the school district as well, and just speaking obviously on the same topic as a concerned parent. In addition to some of the questions that were asked of you, I'd also like to submit a couple of questions for you to review, and I'll happily email them to you as well. One of the concerns I heard mentioned earlier was about the Scott County Health Department mentioning what statistics and information you use from them to determine your decisions there, and I can't give numbers, so I don't understand how the decisions are really being made, and especially if there is a conflict, which we know there's conflicts from them versus the Department of Public Health versus the CDC. I feel like there's not really transparency at all in how the decisions are being made. So that is definitely very concerning to me as a parent. Another question too is how many parents and children of the PV School System right now have been hospitalized due to receiving even the COVID injection? Are there statistics about that? Because if not, there should be and should be well aware of what they are, and it should be disclosed to us all what that is. How many parents and children in the PV School System are also experiencing medical complications currently due to receiving the COVID injection? Because we know, in fact, there are. This has to be researched and disclosed to us, especially within our own community. If it takes two to three months to form a habit psychologically, and our children have been wearing face masks well more than two to three months, what psychological impact are we having on our children? And how is the school board going to be accountable and the school district going to be accountable for helping our children cope through this change? And they're navigating this and afraid of doing the right thing, the wrong thing. And they're navigating this and afraid of doing the right thing, the wrong thing, what to do. And it's going to be a lot on our hands too to navigate that. And I'm very concerned and want to know what's planned to deal with the psychological impact to our children right now. And just from what I understood at the beginning of the year, I thought the whole intent of the mask mandate was to protect the teachers. And understand now that, I understand the statistic might be over 90% of the teachers currently in this district have had the COVID injection. So theoretically, in my mind, the argument doesn't exist anymore to why we're wearing the mask then. I've talked to several teachers specifically who said that they themselves don't even want to wear the face mask and they haven't even been asked. So it's very much a conflict to me of understanding where these decisions made. I see the surveys, I answer every survey that comes my way. Nothing's been asked to the parents specifically about the face mask or anything. Our input hasn't been asked. And I'm questioning if some of the teachers' inputs have really been asked to. So I mean, at this point enough is enough, our voices need to be heard. I mean, you can quote even the statistics for all different organizations as well, but some of this data too is also garbage in, garbage out. And the reality is, I can just say for my own kids in this course of the year, the second they walk out of the school, they're leaving that normal life. They are playing in all their sports, no masks. They're playing with friends, no masks. We're doing everything, no masks. There's been no issues for over the whole year. And many of our friends and groups that we associate with, there's been zero issues the whole year with that. And obviously, I'm speaking just as a parent. You've heard some medical insight from some experts here on the panel already today. But I can tell you just a story from my elementary school student. Two weeks ago, he came home and obviously I asked him to recap his day for me every day. And he was so excited coming from PE and said that he was running in PE and was so proud about how fast he ran. And of course, I asked, is it with a face mask? And of course, he was wearing a face mask with that. And he said the PE teacher said that they should slow down in their running since they're wearing their PE, their face mask. And I understand the physical education handbook, a guidebook right now, was that the kids shouldn't be running with their face mask. But you tell an elementary kid student, "He told me, Mom, I was so proud. I ran the fastest I could. I did my best." And I'm heartbroken listening to him with that. It's wrong. It is so wrong what you guys are doing. So wrong. You have an innocent child and now how do I, as a parent, tell him that's harmful for him? And then I'm teaching my children, always taught them to respect people, respect adults, respect authority. This year I told them, yeah, respect them, but now challenge them, now question them. If it's wrong, if there's no facts, if there's no data to support it, if it seems wrong to you, then stand up and question it. And my kids are afraid to do that. They're afraid. But that's the lesson I'm teaching them right now, because this is ridiculous. I've had enough of this. Had enough this year. It's got to stop. This lunacy has to stop. You've heard enough from some medical experts here tonight too. And I see what it's happening. I see the psychological impact. I see in my work, there's been several suicide attempts this year, so much. And I know there's so much mental health going on around this. And I don't think this is really being taken into account enough and being addressed enough. So I urge you to stop this today. I don't even want you to wait till next school year. And I'm really curious then, when you do make decisions, we want full disclosure of all the statistics about and reasoning and rationale of everything of why you're making these decisions. Because it is not being disclosed. Not enough to us. So thank you for listening to me.
Hello. So I didn't plan on saying anything, so I apologize, but I just want to put in perspective first. You were here last week, you sent this open to crowds this year.
That's correct, yes.
Is this typical? I don't come to this, I apologize. How many people do you typically have in this?
Two. Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Michael Elidge.
Okay.
Mike, what's your last name?
Elidge.
Thank you.
So typically how many? I know you mentioned some.
It depends on the topic and the agenda. I mean, this is a large crowd for us. It depends on students being recognized.
Sure.
Typically, we do not have a big crowd and our agenda is published on Fridays and it's an open meeting and has been conducted in an open meeting setting since the beginning of time. And in COVID era, we even made accommodations to stream. And you guys might be able to comment how many people actually join our live stream.
That's okay. I was just curious. I wasn't sure.
But our meetings are always public.
I bring it up because, you know, put in perspective, it sounds like this is one of the largest, if not the largest group that they've had in quite some time. And we heard a few minutes ago, could you please hurry up? We have other things to get to. I wasn't gonna say anything probably before that comment, but that's disheartening because at this point, they've only heard maybe three or four speakers. Just let that sink in for a second. Most important topic, most people, time to move on.
Have children's lives.
And I'm not trying to incite you, but I just want you to think about that for a second. What that means to me is that there's no fact or piece of information that you're going to present that they haven't heard. And rightly so, I'm assuming you're inundated with this material constantly. I can only imagine. So I guess I want to preface this. Outside, I watched things escalate between two gentlemen in different sides of the discussion. And nobody wants that. I don't want anything violent, nothing like that at all. And I didn't hear that anywhere here, but I'm just explaining that. So when I talk about this, just keep in perspective. How many teachers are you guys responsible for? I don't know these numbers, I'm sorry, but if you could throw a ballpark number, how many people report to you?
350 teachers.
350, okay. Good number I can work with. So I actually met you, Brian, about a year ago. I had a beard. I didn't have LASIK from two weeks ago and I was 50 pounds heavier. So you may not remember me, but we met about the hybrid program. And when I came in, I came in, you know, like these guys had a bunch of stats and I was going to explain how, you know, my kid going into Y Care with 10 other school districts is probably 8,000 times more chance of getting COVID than just staying in her class and doing class every day. Anyway, so we had a good conversation, nice guy. When we got done, I would even say maybe we agreed that this wasn't about kids being in danger. I got the impression, not to put words in your mouth, it was more about teacher fear and teacher liability. Okay, so I left at that and I don't think we've really communicated since. So as I listen to this today, I'm stopping, looking at this from a parent and I'm trying to look at it more from your perspective and maybe I can help bridge this gap potentially. I don't have a lot of experiences that are at school here, but in my travels, I have managed probably 2,000-ish people in my life, which is probably pretty crazy because I look young, I get that. I'm starting to lose some hair, so maybe it'll give me away a little older than I look. But in those travels, I realized that people operate off of two things, rewards and consequences. And so I'm saying this to them, but really I'm saying it to you. You have to think about the rewards and consequences the school district and these leaders have to deal with. That could mean funding, that could mean, you know, obviously legal ramifications from teachers, there's a whole gamut. But when you're sitting here, you have to consider and weigh the rewards and consequences. They each got out of bed today because of reward or consequence. You are here for the same reason. If you do not outweigh their reward or consequence that's keeping them here mandating what they believe, then there's no point in being here. Okay, so just think about that, all right? Again, this is just a perspective. So as you go through and you think about what those look like, keep in mind that out of the 350-ish teachers? Right, 350. They have to deal with every single day, you are but a fraction. Even if this is the largest room they've dealt with, this is no more. I mean, if I were Brian and I had to face the emails and mandatory meetings with unions, who knows? I don't know how this works, sorry. I'm married to a teacher and I still don't know how this stuff works. So if I had to deal with that versus a room full of people that had to be maintained in a certain manner for an hour, I know what I would choose. And so again, as you think about this, you've got to think differently. I challenge you all to think differently so that they can think differently. Because as long as their rewards and consequences outweigh your choice that you're pushing for, you're not going to have a chance. So anyway, I don't have much else to say there. I appreciate taking a few minutes. Just perspective again. Hope everybody has a great evening. So thank you.
Hi, we don't have any motion required regarding an update?
My name is Linda McNeil. And I am a resident of, actually, Bettendorf, but you have open enrollment. I have grandchildren that are coming up. I have a daughter and has three children, that is a special education teacher herself. I am a retired speech language pathologist, 36 years, an outpatient with Genesis. And I have dealt with people with brain injuries. You are all wearing masks. And nobody is wearing a mask that's consistent with another one. You've not been given, you've been given all these orders by the CDC that tell you, you know, you need to wear a mask. You don't need to, you've seen the flip-flopping, just like we have. But you are wearing a mask without any realization of that it's protecting you or what it's doing for you. You're doing it because it's mandated. Your job requires it. And you are mandating it for children. You have heard other experts tell you how bad they are, and I don't think you realize. You're wearing them. I'm sure it's not comfortable. I personally, I can't wear a mask. I can't tell you why. Has to do with me. But I do know, maybe it's because I have knowledge that clients of mine that had had brain injuries that were due to what we call hypoxia, which is lack of oxygen to the brain. They had the worst prognosis. They did not make good recoveries. I had one lady that had three children. She was a young mother. Her memory was affected because she had hypoxia. She never got that ability back. She couldn't remember. Her husband had to quit a job. The children, she knew who her children were. She could talk a good game, but she couldn't remember from one end to the next what to do. You are causing yourself hypoxic brain injury, whether you realize it or not. And it's not going to show up immediately. And the children, my God, think about this. You said you're dedicated to excellence. Then provide that excellence, these children. Not only need to see faces, but they need to breathe oxygen. You are destroying the part of their brain that will give them their higher level cognitive skills later on. That develops later. You know that. You heard that. You're destroying that. And hypoxia causes brain cell death. Not injury, do a brain injury and they can recover, brain cell death in these young children. I just ask you to think about that and please do what you say. Please be dedicated to excellence. Do your own research. Thank you.
If I might, one more time. There are other school districts in the state of Iowa who have already done away with all of the restrictions, okay? So you guys might want to look into them and see what their transmission rates are. I think there's three or four districts in the state that have already just said, "We're done with everything. We're walking away from all of it, but the kids be kids." So just as a reference point, you might want to look at that. Yeah.
Thank you all for coming. I know, I know when you look at us, you think we don't hear you. And we do hear you. But we also hear from a lot of parents that have the opposite view of you. So just to keep that in perspective, you guys are here unhappy, but we have a lot of parents that we hear from that are on the opposite end of the spectrum.
Their perspective is being masks.
Excuse me?
Their perspective is being masks. They're getting the masks. We should have options as well. You're giving them their options.
We don't want to change their mind.
No, yeah, I have no problem.
They did not want to wear a mask. We want choices.
We want a choice.
I understand.
That's the problem.
Outside, just really quick, I'm so sorry. You mentioned the religious exemption, but I think you were talking about vaccines and masks at the same time. So are the masks under the same situation where if you have a religious exemption, you do not have to wear a mask?
With all fairness, yes. Medical or religious exemption, yes.
For masks as well, obviously.
Yes, we have that.
What about common sense exemptions?
That's, yeah, that's. That was a philosophical. That option was never presented to me. I've kept my job home 100% online because between the masks and the overuse of hand sanitizer, which 150 different chemicals from hand sanitizers were recalled by the FDA, there's nobody checking the health standards to make sure that those things that have been recalled are in the actual hand sanitizers that our kids are using. Or how much they're using in a day, right? So like they're using so many times the amount that would normally be used for hand sanitizer. We know hand washing is more effective. But a religious exemption was never presented as an option to me as a parent in this district, not once. And when I presented the medical information that was happening with me and another child, I was told that without a doctor indefinitely saying that my daughter already has the issue that you guys cannot facilitate an exemption. Why would I take the chance in finding out? Why are we reactionary with this and not preventative? Yes? Don't open yourselves up for liability like this. It's not necessary. Our tax dollars should not have to pay now for, you know, liability then to other families and parents who then have to sue you guys or come after you guys because you weren't proactive in your thinking. Choice is the only way to keep everybody safe. Because if there's a risk at all medically, I mean, the exhalation process alone is a detoxification pathway. So if you're detoxing through exhalation and then the kids are re-inhaling those toxins again, everybody's at risk for a medical event because of masks. So if there's risk, there has to be choice. It's the only way to keep everyone safe, guys.
Mr. Charles, could I ask you, when you mentioned the three options you were looking at for next year, the one about the choice, it seemed like that that was a likely contender or perhaps even a one that...
Brandon, I can't say right now to what that will be for sure, but yes, that is one that we clearly be looking at as the optional option for kids.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd just like to say it's fascinating and there's been so many great things said here tonight. I think a lot of what they do deal with is, and it's not here, are parents that are at the other end of the spectrum and they're really, really worried and they're scared. And they're really, really.
You're promoting that fear.
And a great, and a great number of those parents are also very much in favor of vaccines. And I understand. And there's been some great information here about choice and that we want choice. And I assume that we would all agree that that goes the other way, that parents should have that choice.
That's the only thing I've said.
I understand, I understand. And it seems like that if we can work to put minds at ease on the other side of the spectrum, more of those minds at ease, it only raises the possibility that we can do without masks. Because then those voices that are so worried about the virus may be less powerful. And so in that sense, it seems like it's a wonderful idea to me to have accessibility to a choice.
For like vaccines.
Not in a school.
We're not going to have a dialogue, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We cannot have a dialogue like this during a board meet tonight because we have lots of things. We take your opinions, we've heard that, truly we have listened to you, please understand that. But we can't have the dialogue going back. So I don't mean to stop it, Brandon.
No, I understand. You do have other business. I think we should let you get to that. I mean, we've said probably more to be absorbed in one night, Brandon.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to birth force, Grove Elementary change order.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
So there, Jen, tonight, looking at the next piece here with the Forest Grove change order. Looking at where we're at right now, just going to go through this document, going to see what has transpired. Nothing really too out of the ordinary. You see, we did have one savings for the $75,000, or $7,500. We made the decision to take the hand dryers instead of using the push-button automatic air ones. We're now going to move to paper towels instead. The reason being, just not knowing where we'd land, we've been using paper towels all year. When you remove the paper towel holders actually behind it, will still be a faceplate with the wiring for hand dryers in the future if we want to go down that path. So right now, we have a cost savings there.
So, right now, we have a cost savings there. A couple of things I want to point out to you, just so you are aware. When you drive out to Forest Grove and you look at the current setup, when you're coming from the east and turning into the school, the turn lane is kind of narrow there on coming from the east into the school. So, we're going to cut that back. So, you'll see a cost down here that has to do with the cement work on that side of the building. And then, there's also some questions. You look through the packet about what we should be painting in terms of the curves right there at the island. The cost came in at over $2,000 to paint the island. So, we believe we can paint that ourselves at a much cheaper rate and just paint the sides, not the entire island. So, we did not take that option. That was one that we crossed off. So, just, and these are nothing out of the ordinary. We do have about $9,000 still left in our contingency plan. We do believe might be another check back. They'll make that a higher amount. But we are rolling into our last final days here of the project, which is exciting to see. And our first shipment of furniture is arriving on next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. So, you're ready to go. Very exciting. I'll take any questions you have, that's all about the highlights.
As far as paper towels dispensers versus hand dryers, the cost of the paper towels, do you think it is still, you know, given the cost of the paper towels we're punishing our children, is something that it'll be a costly means, right?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And I'd have to ask, we kind of, how much we've spent this year